For their loved ones. In addition to addictive substance consumption increasing markedly during the pandemic, many of our behavioral health clients have become less stable and some more ill during the pandemic after years of shrinking resources in psychiatric hospitalization availability as well as intensive treatment options. The most fundamental ways to maximize societal gains may be by integrating health-promoting approaches in public enterprises, for example, development, transportation, and housing. However, we should also do everything possible to encourage the populace to make well-informed personal decisions based on your experience. We can assist this with programs that ensure an excellent start for all, and you'll hear about two of these today, such as the prenatal care continuum and better choices by youth, such as those promoted by the Youth Success Program, which you'll hear about. We must extend this approach, though, through the phases of life, including helping the elderly to access the services they need to maintain independent lives as long as possible. Administrative services are integral to the delivery of our services, acting as a concrete foundation supporting direct service. These tools always need to be in our toolbox and available. Unfortunately, staffing of that has not kept up with growth. Our health services organization and colleagues' performance also highlights some great strengths. During this protracted crisis, full advantage has been made of our combined public health and behavioral health organization with very productive collaboration across service areas to support even sustain our clientele and communities. Our colleagues have worked long and hard to contain contagion, calm the anxious, and immunize at a rapid pace, one that sets an example for other counties and the state. We could not have responded to this crisis without all of these people, working parts, and programs the department coming together to support the instant command system, all the while providing exceptional continuity services. So this afternoon, we look forward to sharing more details of our programs, plans, and requests, and your questions. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Dr. Conway. Commissioners, members of the Budget Committee, I'm Cheryl Smallman. I'm the Business Officer for Health Services, and it's nice to be with you again today. We spoke in April at the budget briefing, and let's see if, here we go. And here's what we have in store for you today. We'll briefly go over what we discussed in April. We'll then talk about what's changed since the April meeting or the requested budget versus what you have in front of you today, the proposed. We'll then talk about each service area, the key policy decisions and special requests that are in front of you this week, for which you'll make a decision. It should be noted that, yes, we have three service areas: administration, which is comprised of admin services and the Director's Office, behavioral health, and public health. They're just bulleted in four points to help group these special requests. We'll then wrap it up with a brief summary. We have plenty of time for discussion, for questions and answers, so please don't hesitate to ask or interject, should you need to. Just a reminder what we covered in April. We talked about the 2021 accomplishments and performance. We gave you a rather girthy binder with plenty of information, I'm sure, to keep you busy since then. It included an annual report with data metrics on our performance. We talked about what we've learned over the last year, particularly with regard to the pandemic. The first that we talked about was the need for support infrastructure, as Dr. Conway noted. This past year certainly emphasized or highlighted support infrastructure's role and how integral it is to delivering services: setting up processes, making sure that operations were able for the specialized in those direct service positions to carry out their functions. COVID exposed just how lean these supports are in our department. We also spoke about the increased need for crisis and intensive services, particularly because of the dramatic reduction in psychiatric beds. Limited housing options for the most mentally ill clients is causing additional pressure on the crisis and intensive services teams as they work to maintain these clients in the community versus in treatment centers. And lastly, but certainly not least, we talked about the gaps in public health, how it's historically been underfunded, that's a national trend, and the severe deficiencies in addressing health equity to marginalized groups. We've talked at length about the requested budget and special requests. And we shared with you this graphic forecasting out to 2026. And what's particular about this graph is that it's a rosier picture than we've been able to show you in the last several years. So while you see an unfunded gap in 2026, historically, we've had that gap one year out, and then we come back to you, and that gap is one year out. What we know today is that that gap still exists, but it's not until 2026. So what's changed since April? I'm going to talk about two funds primarily: Fund 270, which is the Behavioral Health Reserve Fund, and Fund 274, our operating fund. In front of you is what we shared in April, which is the Behavioral Health Reserve Fund, Fund 270. You'll see here that we have fiscal year '21 revised on the numbers on the left-ish columns, and fiscal year '22 requested, which started with $12.2 million. And if you look all the way at the bottom, well, second to last number on the bottom, you'll see in reserves, it says $13.8 million. That's where we thought we would end fiscal year '22. Updated numbers, as Commissioner DeBonne often says, health services is very dynamic, and this certainly is the case. We've updated those numbers to start fiscal year '22 with $13.4 million. That includes revisions to this year's fiscal year '21's projected PPS revenue. It includes an accrued revenue that we anticipate in settlement with the state. It includes agreement with Pacific Source related to language in the previous contract. So we are in the proposed budget, we anticipate ending fiscal year '22 with $15 million instead of $13.8. Now, Fund 274, our operating fund, also has seen numerous changes since April. We'll talk about Fund 274 for the rest of the duration unless, of course, you have questions. And in front of you are the major changes since April or since the requested budget. We have increased our FTE by .8, so that changes where we're starting fiscal year '22, and the details are there. I'm happy to share more if you have questions. On the behavioral health side, they received a Central Oregon Health Council, or COHC, older adult grant, which is approximately $833,000 over three years. So how that impacts fiscal year '22, it adds $315,250 and two FTE to your fiscal year '22 proposed budget. So by adopting it, you are implicitly approving those FTE. And additionally, we received Oregon Health Authority COVID-19 funds, which equate to $2.9 million and can be used over three years. It covers 19 FTE. The majority of those are limited duration, so how that impacts fiscal year '22 from what you saw in April is it adds two FTE from the requested budget. It includes $1.9 million to fiscal year '22, and that's how, you'll see in the three dots there, bullets, that's how it impacts the different service areas. So, to re, yes.
Those additional FTE, are those ones that were already included in the budget?
Correct. They're included in the proposed. I'll talk in a minute about one FTE that is not in the proposed that is approved for fiscal year '21, so very dynamic. So here's what you, we shared with you back in April. This is Fund 274 rolled up. You'll see there in the middle column fiscal year '22 requested starts with $10 million, and the overall appropriation was requested at $58.6 million. So with those major changes, as well as a couple smaller changes, that has changed the proposed budget to $61,027,946, which is an increase of $2.4 million from April. Lot of numbers, a lot of details. Any questions at this point? Yes. DeBonne.
I was just trying to process back to Fund 270, is the name of its always been mental health service, and you refer to it as kind of a help to the general. So, and the dollars coming into that, now that you're trying to explain the difference between, is this the place where the resources come in for this service, or do we put resources there for the future?
Well, historically, it's my understanding, this served as a place to put the dollars that we were receiving, that were not being expended related to Oregon Health Plan or capitation.
Oregon Health and mental health?
Mental health. It's specific to behavioral health. Yep, yep. So now we have a mix of the Oregon Health Plan dollars and the Certified Community Behavioral Health Clinic Demonstration Prospective Payment Systems, PPS for short.
So far, we want to kind of detail question, is CCBHC offered to more than Oregon Health Plan members?
Yes, it is, to be a CCBHC, you have to agree to serve anyone who meets criteria, regardless of payer. So the prospective payment takes into account the cost of serving people for whom you can't be reimbursed by the Oregon Health Plan. So that's part of the formula that goes into that PPS rate. Yeah.
Thank you. A little bit more information?
Yeah.
Just clarify, I think for the Budget Committee also, so the numbers that you see in light blue on the two charts that Cheryl just spoke to, those numbers have been included in the line item budget that are in your binders. They're different from what you saw in April, but they are part of the base package that's proposed in front of the Budget Committee. So as Cheryl said, in adopting the budget, you're essentially adopting these numbers that have been noted here in the tables.
Jenna, she's got an email out on Friday, or maybe Saturday morning, about CCBHC.
Yes.
That wasn't coming forward, but they think it's going to go in the Governor's Budget. When will we know that?
Yeah, that's a really good question. So there's still really strong support for CCBHC. As you all are even more familiar with than I, the legislative process is not going to get all of the bills that were proposed through the session. So CCBHC may be one bill that they turn into a governor's budget funding package as opposed to an actual bill, and I don't think that's been decided yet, and I don't think we'll know for probably two to three more weeks. Yeah.
I was not happy to see that, because honestly, I thought there was bipartisan support.
There is bipartisan support. It's literally a timing of getting bills out of committee and to the floor for a vote. That's the issue, and I think they're just trying to pick the ones they know are going to need a vote. This has support one way or the other. Our preference would be a bill because we think anchoring it in legislation is important, but funding is ultimately what matters. So.
One other question about CCBHC, so what you're discussing right now is the state matching.
Correct.
Can you remind me what the ratio is of, and how much state matching dollars you mean in federal dollars?
It's roughly a four to one match, and you're correct, the funding and the bill are related to the Oregon Legislature's support for funding the match for CCBHCs and also continuing it as a legislative concept, right? The federal CCBHC funding is approved through September 30th, 2023, so this is really about how the match is paid, whether it's out of our back pocket or out of the general fund.
And that's how the one is paid to the four that is secured already?
If we don't come up with that dollar, we lose three to four, sometimes even a little more, depending on the ratio, federal dollars. Exactly right.
We're talking about Fund 274, right?
We're talking, I think we started on Fund 270. A lot of the PPS revenue has gone into the reserve, which is one of the policy decisions we'll get to shortly.
Well, I just had a question on, it's on 274. You have a beginning net working capital of $10,218, and then you have a contingency of $7,331. Spend everything, you're going to be approximately $3 million light the following year. Now, would you continue to draw down that contingency and exhaust it, or would you make cuts, or would you seek additional general fund money next year?
Well, we've been, we would have enough, it would probably be a combination, quite honestly. A lot of what you see in contingency are dollars that are set aside to support our special requests if they are approved. So there's about $4.5 million in there that is just for our 8.3% minimum requirement. Depending on the program and the funding stream, it would probably be a mix of what we would need to support, since behavioral health dollars can't necessarily go to support a public health program that may be needing additional funds.
Yeah, I just look at, we may have some tougher decisions next year because of the drawdown of the, the way it sits now. Okay, that's fine, I'm, I'm.
Okay, FTE, we are ending fiscal year '21 with 359 at the time of the proposed budget. We have four positions that are ending this fiscal year '21, and we're requesting to extend one, which is a special request. It's number two on your policy sheet, and that FTE is in the proposed, so if you approve the adopted budget, it would be approved. We're eliminating point four, which is a vacant FTE, and then it adds the two COHC older adults positions I mentioned earlier, plus special requests if approved.
Could I just ask, what's an older adult? I just want to know.
Not you.
Right here. Sign me up.
Well, technically, it's people over 55, but we're typically, and I'm in the club, but we're typically serving people over 65 with Medicare who have mental health disorders and other co-occurring conditions.
Thank you.
Yeah.
You covered.
I'm covered.
Mike, you have a bunch of glasses, I'm so glad you have those.
They stay in my bag. Those are budget glasses.
Since the proposed budget, we've had some additions. We've added one FTE, so when I said we would end fiscal year '21 with 359, we actually will end with 360. We've also been notified of about $1 million that will be coming to the Health Services Department, which should go to implement our equity plan and can be used for incentives. We're meeting later this week, and we'll take that to the Board for discussion and hopefully approval.
What kind of incentives?
Incentives to receive the vaccine.
Okay.
We've received two other smaller grants, but certainly impactful, the St. Charles Alcohol Misuse Prevention Grant and a COHC Immunization Data Grant. So it is our intent, if accepted, to put that into the adopted budget for expenditure in fiscal year '22. So with that, I'd like to take us into our special requests and the policy decisions in front of you. In April, we talked about administrative services having two requests.
Paige, would that be on?
Well, it's on this note, on the handout, page seven.
It's number seven, special request.
Yes, sorry, I should have oriented you. And I have a spreadsheet that I've handed out, it's blue. Yep.
Number seven is on page 320, 321, something like, 321.
321?
In the big binder.
Whole bunch of special requests.
Yes.
Thirteen.
We have thirteen.
Christ, 321, all right. They're pretty special. Gotcha.
So the first one I'm going to talk about is number seven.
Is priority seven?
Number.
Seven.
Yep.
Number seven, priority seven.
Yeah.
I didn't know, it says priority seven.
The request is to convert one limited-duration admin assistant to regular. The cost is approximately $88,000 annually, and we have the funds to support it through fiscal year '23. After that, it would be indirect-to-department programs. We've cobbled together this funding for this specific position since 2017 through various funding sources: grants, PPS, both from behavioral health and now from public health. And the ability to support it through both service areas should be an indicator of the departmental agreement that this position is critical. We brought this ask before you last year. We're asking for it again because we believe that it's essential. It acts as a center point for communication with external departments. It supports all of admin services as well as public health and behavioral health, and without it, my colleague Chris Wyler and I would be doing much of the work, such as ordering departmental supplies or being that communication between departments. And as Dr. Conway noted, in terms of administrative services, staffing levels have not kept pace with the growth of the department, so we're operating very leanly.
Is this your first priority?
It is for administrative services, yes.
What about for the whole department?
Well, I would say.
Hate to put you on the spot.
May I? So we did undertake to, you know, I was the, I suppose, stucie for undertaking an overall ranking, but it's first priority programmatically, and that's as listed.
Thank you. Priority one.
So the next special request is number 11 on your handout. It is add one FTE, which will act to oversee asset and vendor management. It's another position that perhaps is not the most appealing to fund or to approve, but it is part of the critical support infrastructure that Dr. Conway talked about at the beginning. We have just gotten to a point where we need to support a mobile and growing workforce, and that also includes meeting increased national compliance standards. So we're already the county's largest department. We have no position that tracks, maintains, or supports technology, per se, in our department. We do have a health information technology team, which is staffed by three regular FTE, whose specific workload is to work on our electronic health record system, so not tracking assets. We've explored other options with multiple vendors, or by outsourcing it, or looking internally to the IT department. They do not have capacity to do this. It's not necessarily something that we want to take on, but we have to take on, so we're asking for capacity to do that.
So priority 11 is number two.
Number two for admin services, yeah. So we have two special requests. We are not asking for county general funds in fiscal year '22. The total cost is $192,606 and impacts two FTE, but one is existing.
I thought it was $104,444.
For that one position. This is for admin services combined.
Okay.
Number seven and number 11 together.
Gotcha.
These are funded through internal program charges?
Correct, yep. The first one for the admin assistant is funded for two years through a grant. The application system analyst in fiscal year '22 would be vacancy savings from this year, but after that, both would be indirect charges to programs.
And you say as the program continues to grow, that this would just be an arable growth, and is it going to use internal service charges to run? So just administration type to keep up with?
Exactly, yeah, well put.
But just for full disclosure, that indirect allocation could include programmatic public health group behavioral health fund, but it could also institute a need for greater general fund in future years to sustain the position.
Correct, yep.
That was, it sounds like you're trying to keep all options open by using the words you're using, even saying no general fund this year, referring to that that could happen. But if there was internal service funds, do you do that with any positions now in the Health Department?
All of administrative services, including the Director's Office, are supported through internal allocation to programs proportional to their expenditures.
Yeah, so that may plug in other positions one way or another in the future.
Yep.
And that allocation also includes all your county indirects, right?
It does.
That come in for IT and finance and so forth that come into admin, but then are spread throughout the department.
Yep.
And so all of your different funding sources all have caps on that one, your internal service affiliate funded internal service charges as well?
Yes, they do.
And that's partly why when we have grants that allow us to ask for administrative positions as well as direct service positions, we make those asks, because often that allows us to grow some capacity where we don't necessarily have the indirects we can rely on for that, because some grants only allow 10%, 8%, 15%, just depends.
You can sneak in more this way.
Pardon? We don't sneak.
I know you don't.
Well, coming from my past, the question was always whether you use those funds, even if you could use them, for administrative indirect services, but the other side of it is those dollars could be going to direct services.
Yeah, it's a difficult decision every single time we write a grant. What client do we not serve so that we can have adequate infrastructure to do the work? So.
And you've seen one program, you've seen one program.
Yeah.
And it's very dynamic.
It is.
And I'd like to hand it over to Dr. Conway to talk about the requests in Director's Office.
Maybe we should get blinds so we can press the button.
And this will be brief. There's only two from my corner. So we have two requests. The first is for health information and engagement, and we'd like to convert a 1.0 FTE, limited duration, to regular. Sorry?
Only get a little closer.
They're going on and off. So the microphones are going on and off in the room. That's why Sharon's been able to come in and ask to reset, but they're just going on and off right now.
Well, I should be used to that. By reputation, I go on and off too, so. So the main, can you hear me now?
Yes.
The main task for this role is to translate complex medical and health messages into readily understood language for public use. And this need was certainly highlighted during the COVID-19 pandemic. The impact of doing this well is to strengthen public trust and engagement through dissemination of accurate and timely information and to overall improve health literacy. Total cost is just under $124,000, and there's no inherent request for new county funds.
So I'm reading this right, on page three thirty-one, is that the request? No one's- It said priority twelve.
Yep, that's the one.
And so that position total, net cost is one hundred and sixty-eight?
Hold on.
This was my mistake, it's actually number thirteen.
Okay.
Public information officer.
One twenty-three ninety-six?
Yes.
Yeah, that's correct, it's number thirteen, and it's a proofreading failure on my part that I didn't grasp that.
Yeah, I wasn't trying, so this is priority three.
And then, the other one is number twelve. So this should be, the first one should be number thirteen, and the second one should be number twelve, correct? Cheryl?
Yes, correct.
Sorry, I didn't pick up on that.
So, Dr. Conway, is this person someone who would be speaking to the public? Or are they dealing with complicated information and putting out a message?
Both.
Okay, so we would be hearing from them as the general public?
Yeah, yeah, so during the COVID, the incumbent in this role has been Morgan Emerson, who's been serving as the public information officer for health services during that time. But the inherent task is to take complicated messages and render them simple, understandable, and be responsible, I'm sorry, responsive to things like the press and whatnot.
So, in the absence of a COVID pandemic, why would we need to hear from them? What would be the first?
Oh, well, it's, so there's two reasons. One is, much of public health especially is about persuading people, whether it's to get their child immunized, or whether it's to stay inside when there's smoke outside, or wearing their bicycle helmet, or their seatbelt, or getting their sexually transmitted disease treated, or being aware of that hazard. So there's a very large portion of public health, and then there's a lot of public information that's important for behavioral health. So for example, top-of-mind awareness that there is a suicide hotline, and what the number is, and that we have, now have a crisis center, and that we can help people that are in crisis.
Kind of following up with Bruce, it seems like we've gone through the worst nightmare that you guys could have imagined, and you've done a wonderful job, and everyone's really lucky to have you at the helm. Doesn't seem like it can get any worse, and why would we need more people to do this?
Actually, this is, this particular request is not really for more people. It's to make it permanent, so it's easier for us to, if we're talking about the health information person, and I think we are, it's just to make it a regular job, so it's easier to recruit and retain.
How does this meld in with the request in admin?
They're two separate requests. Yeah, so as Dr. Conway just said, this wouldn't add a new person, this is just converting one to regular. And in admin, it is a net add an FTE to the department if approved, but there's some movement of duties within several functions there. And I would say, in addition to what George said, what we've seen, certainly in admin, I'm sure the exact same thing is true in health, the increase in social media communications has just grown exponentially over the last couple of years. So it's all any of us can do, those people who are dedicated to that platform to keep up with it. I mean, that's the preferred method of communication with their government for many, many people, and it's growing all the time. So it's just, it's a capacity issue, really, to keep up with that, in addition to the strategic messaging that George mentioned in terms of different topical subjects.
Yeah, I'd echo what Tom just said about social media, I'd do my best to keep it out of my mind.
So you're seeing the opportunity to get messaging out better from your department, do a better job with the public. Because there's always been that need, you've always had that message, but it hasn't gotten out, I guess.
Well, I'm not, I'm not sure, there's, for the evidence, it hasn't gotten out, but I think that we, it continues to be of paramount importance, and maybe I'm not following.
I think one of the things that George mentioned in his introductory comments is a really critical theme, which is that this pandemic, and Mike is right, it doesn't get much worse than it's been this year. It's been the toughest year any of us has faced in a very long time. But it did illuminate where the gaps are quite glaring, and we paid attention to that, and we're sharing that information with you so that you have an opportunity to make some choices with us about where we need to fill some gaps, and this was definitely one of them, an informational gap in terms of how we communicate with our community, and we're going to have other crises. We're going to have fires, we may have climate crises, frankly, we may have other kinds of disease events. We may have a crisis on the horizon related to vaccinating children, because that really got put on the back burner by necessity from the pandemic. So I don't think we're out of the woods for the need to talk to our community about these really complicated situations, if that's helpful.
Well, and actually to-
Emergency services coordinator?
Pardon?
I'm just reading the literature, the public health emergency preparedness coordinator is a permanent position now. Does this person work for that person?
No, this person would report directly to Dr. Conway or the director. So it would cover and span all health services topics, including behavioral health and public health.
So the public health emergency coordinator, who undertook this responsibility, then, what are they going to do now?
Well, they, so it would depend on who ends up doing what, but they would end up reverting to that responsibility, which they've been detailed out of, and we've been lacking one during this time. And actually, to go back to your other question about what could be worse than a pandemic, what could be worse than a pandemic is having a pandemic and then the worst fire season in the region. And I actually thought we could always have Cascadia in the middle of a pandemic, too. So there's, things can be heaped, things can be heaped on.
They'll be around.
I don't want to be prepared, but I would be prepared.
Commissioner?
If I can ask a question, so we've been talking about how making people more aware of services can help to get the services to the people who need them. You know, so that there's basic outreach and access opportunities, benefits around that. Earlier today, there, you know, actually at the very beginning of the day, there was a bunch of questions about the Crisis Stabilization Center, how that was going to be funded long-term. And one of the things that emerged from that conversation that was very clear was that there's a whole bunch of stakeholders in this community that need to understand the value of that operation in order to get them to open their wallets and, you know, co-invest with us in that facility. So I, one of the things I'm curious about is whether having a dedicated public information officer capacity, whether that helps us not just, you know, market services to the people who need health services, but also helps make the community more aware of what it takes to provide health services, and, you know, encourages them to co-invest with us.
Sure, sure, and I'd say that that, the word isn't used here, but representation is key for both of those. And for example, like what Mr. Anderson mentioned, the social media presence and responsiveness, and the message push from that would certainly contribute to drawing attention to that. And then let's say that we had service statistics, like Holly Harris, who's directing the Stabilization Center, has shared, pushing them in an artful way to emphasize that, and then maybe adding different key partners to user groups, Facebook, et cetera, and adding their clientele and members as well.
Can I add just one small piece to this, if you'll allow me? When I was, I don't know if I'm, can you hear me?
Yep.
Oh, I can have. Kind of feels awkward. I think one thing that we might want to consider, and this capacity frankly can exist anywhere in the county, we just feel that, given the complexity of health services, it might, and given how large health services is, it might make sense to have this built-in capacity, because it really requires just-in-time reaction and some proactive nature to it. I think, when I think about this pandemic, and that's the only context I have in Deshute County frankly, we could have had the best tools, strategies, capable people. If fundamentally we didn't have community trust and support and engagement, we would have had nothing. They were the ones who, at the end of the day, were wearing masks and abiding by some of the guidelines. And they were doing that based on some level of trust in what they were hearing from all of you, from all of us, and engaging in the decision-making process and co-creating some of the solutions with us. So I think fundamental to our success moving forward, no matter what disease, condition, service we're talking about, is making sure that we have the capacity in the county, especially in health services, to get information, the right information out at the right time, to the right people, and engage them in the decision-making process, so that then we can build upon that.
So, I'm sorry, I don't mean to be, thanks very much, Nahad, I don't mean to be rude, but I do, I do, in some ways fundamentally believe in this sort of servant leadership connection. And I want to be sure that we don't take up all the time talking about two positions attached to my office when we have, I mean, these are, once again, to support our service areas, and the key thing our department does is in the public health and behavioral health realm. And the tools, such as administration provides, and things like representation that my small group assists with are important. But I don't want to get into an overly lengthy discussion of these two requests, such that we foreshorten the time that we have to discuss a lot of other key things.
So, thank you very much for that, Dr. Conway. One more question on that topic, though, pardon me, so health information, I guess, health information and engagement position. During a pandemic is a point where we're really managing a critical situation, we're all learning on the fly. If this position is in there long-term, I haven't seen that there's probably going to be some need for some policy choices, or some flow of information, you know, policies for the board of commissioners, you know, so I think of the health department as this great group of people providing these services, but sometimes the message doesn't resonate the same when I hear it than maybe you intend on it. And as an elected commissioner, I'd really want to work on the, how does this information flow? And I don't, it's been awkward recently, because we get an email that says, you know, please give me feedback by noon, because I'm going to send this out, and I may or may not see it by noon, which has been fine during a pandemic, but I don't see that going into the future. So I'm just sharing, a policy-type, you know, procedures, how is this all going to work?
Well, one of the things that we've been doing, and thanks for your time, in this, is trying to have these policy discussions in lieu of the recent data on Tuesdays, the commission chair prior to having public meetings, and then we often craft the messages and fine-tune that based on the feedback that we receive from you.
Yeah.
Do you need your PowerPoint back up? Cheryl? Oh, there it is.
So, this is the other, and you've already corrected, the miracle of having a laptop at hand. Oh, no, not corrected, no, this is still, this should be number twelve, medical, clinical capacity, sorry. So this is an ask to, for us to have a full-time health officer. And the needs for this include increasing population, increasing complexity of the environment. And it's been very difficult for us to recruit even a half-time officer for this. So this is, what underlies this is that it's difficult to recruit in a current environment for this specific request. The impact of doing this would be to attract and keep a top-notch candidate, and ensure long-term medical and clinical vision and solutions, and to ensure medical and clinical direction and capacity in a growing community facing complex health conditions and emerging threats. The total cost of that would be not quite one hundred sixty-nine thousand. No direct new county fund requests, and I have to, on a personal note, I have to point out that one of the reasons I'm concerned about this has to do with succession planning and making sure that the department doesn't suffer whenever I leave, since I've been actually fulfilling some percentage of this role since my arrival, even though it isn't part of my billet. So that's one of the concerns that I have, and one of the reasons we're bringing up now. So just to summarize, the two requests we have are for converting half-time to a full-time health officer, and then the other discussion that we've discussed at length in health information.
I know we've talked about this a lot, and Dr. Fawcett is not interested in taking this over full-time. That's correct.
Dr. Fawcett is board certified in infectious disease, and has a very busy clinical practice. He's expressed to me that he actually would have liked to be able to move into a half-time, half-time health officer position, but that his other responsibilities preclude that, and clearly preclude working full-time.
And we really haven't had anybody answer any of that request, I mean, because hasn't this position, wasn't it out for a couple, like, a few months?
We had, we did have two applicants.
Two, and they didn't make it?
One of them was manifestly not qualified, and the other was actually Dr. Fawcett, and he decided he didn't, he did not have the ability to manage his schedule such that he could do it.
Okay, and with that, I'll ask Janice Garso, Director of Behavioral Health.
We're going to, Nahad and I will play musical chairs at this juncture, since he's the next presenter after this.
Okay, taking a breath, shifting gears. I want to, before talking a little bit about our budget proposals, just acknowledge that today, June first, is the one-year anniversary of the soft opening of the Deschutes Crisis Stabilization Center. And they celebrated today with pizza and cookies, which I consumed, and I'm now feeling the impact of. I should have eaten protein, and I ate carbs, but it was yummy. So thanks to our commissioners for support of that project. It has now served one thousand six hundred and nine walk-ins since the date it was opened. Too close, sorry, okay. And is doing quite well in terms of law enforcement diversions. We have our law enforcement drop-offs are now taking four-point-seven minutes on average versus the hours that law enforcement spent in the emergency room when they would bring individuals there, just as one small success point. So, we have several key policy decisions before this group today. First is our request that you join us in capitalizing on the commitment that is now sustained to certified community behavioral health clinics, or CCBHCs. This, as you know, is an investment that started way back in two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and thirteen, with the Excellence in Mental Health Care Act, and manifested in the CCBHC demonstration pilot project, which we participated in, and in grant funding through the expansion grant. We now understand how to make use of prospective payment revenue, and we foresee that continuing in the future based on the commitment that's been sustained to CCBHCs. We hope to have you join us in acting on that commitment. And the reason we hope that is that we think it's time to really achieve the expansion that was envisioned by CCBHCs. We've gotten part of the way there, we would like to get all the way there, and we'll talk a bit more about that in a moment. Related to this is that we hope to have approval for some special requests to ensure that our capacity is present to meet the growing behavioral health need and- to ensure that our capacity is present to meet the growing behavioral health need in our community. So, one of those requests relates to stabilizing our current CCBHC positions. And then the other special requests are really related to aligning services and additions to meet growing need. So, I think it's important to really tell the story of CCBHCs so that it's clear why we see such a sustained commitment. If you recall, in April of 2017, the Board of County Commissioners joined us in agreeing to launch a CCBHC Demonstration Pilot. We were one of eight states in the country that were funded. As part of that funding, we were asked to conduct a needs assessment to determine what was the staffing level we needed to meet the community need. And we did that based on a fairly complicated formula that outlines, how many folks do you need to serve a serious and persistently mentally ill population? Based on that needs assessment, we identified 29 positions that were both direct service and support and quality improvement kinds of positions. And over the course of two years, we generated more than we had anticipated. We generated $12.9 million in prospective payment revenue for that two-year period that both covered the positions that we added and added revenue into our reserve. Since that time, there was some uncertainty about CCBHC demonstration being continued. And Congress did act in a bipartisan effort, supported by one of our own in Oregon, to extend CCBHCs three times. Most of those extensions occurred after we had submitted our budget. So we were not able to plan on the revenue and apply that revenue to services and to positions. Along came the Expansion Grant, which allowed us to secure 19 of the original 29 CCBHC positions and ensure that there was funding there to stabilize those positions while we waited to see what would unfold with the demonstration pilot. But also during that time, we still generated prospective payment revenue to the tune of $7.4 million in unplanned PPS, which helped both to cover budget gaps and to add to our reserves. In March of 2020, Congress, through the CARES Act, extended the CCBHC Demonstration Project through September 2023. This is a substantial commitment. 10 states are now demonstration sites and 45 states versus the original, I believe 15, have CCBHC expansion grants or demonstration grants or both. And we project in the coming fiscal year that we will generate an additional $3.75 million in PPS revenue based on this continuation. Our current budget proposal actually brings us full circle to funding the existing 19 positions and adding FTE totaling 29 positions. You saw this slide when I presented before, but I think it's really important to highlight again that CCBHC is not just an investment, but it's an investment that has delivered positive outcomes for our clients. We've reduced jail and homelessness. For example, a 13% reduction in homelessness for the past 30 days for a small subset of our population. A 60% reduction in jail recidivism for another population that we serve. We added the Forensic Act team. We are also seeing reductions in recidivism and jail time for our aid and assist clients. We're making progress towards reducing the risk of early death. We have primary care embedded at all locations. We are helping our clients manage their diabetes and show an 88% A1C control. What that means is that our clients actually are doing better in managing their A1C than our local FQHC's client population or patient population. And we're following up at the rate of 95% on any one of our clients who's open with us and visits the ED for any reason. We're also reducing the cost of utilization of high levels of care. We've seen a 14% overall reduction in ED use, a 21% reduction for high utilizers of the ED, and a 23% decrease in depression scores, which is really significant because we know that depression poorly managed is one of the reasons, leads to higher healthcare costs. So, I will summarize the requests. We went over them in quite a bit of detail last time. First, we are asking that we apply prospective payment revenue to continue the 19 limited duration Expansion Grant positions through at least September 2023 when the CCBHC prospective payment ends, although we do believe it will continue. And convert those FTE, consider converting those FTE to regular positions based on the sustained commitment to CCBHC and projected revenue. On your priority sheet, your blue and white sheet, priority one are crisis services. If you recall, that's in response to the virtual disappearance of civil commitment beds for our most ill individuals, the decrease in psychiatric treatment beds in the community. And this adds positions and services in our crisis array and in our intensive services array to serve our most acute population. We are able to cover that cost with PPS revenue with the exception of two specific positions for which we are requesting county general fund in the amount of $242,000. We are also focused on ensuring that we're improving access to our services. Access continues to be a struggle for clients. We want to add a referral coordinator to manage the significant increase in volume of referrals, both into our agency and to the community. We are asking that one of those 19 limited duration positions at a minimum become a regular position, and that is our language access coordinator, who's been, had a profound impact on our services to the community this year. It also adds a peer support specialist to help folks navigating our complex system. That particular peer would be tasked with reaching out to vulnerable populations in particular. We have, for example, a peer who does outreach to our opioid-using population, to our veterans population. We have peers in our Harriman Healthcare Center. And this peer would be doing outreach to folks in the community that struggle to access our services. And then our special request number eight is for key infrastructure. This is for a quality improvement analyst who will help us manage risk and keep up with the increasing workload of charts to be reviewed. It doesn't sound super exciting, but it's critical work and it helps us mitigate risk for giving dollars back frankly to Medicaid for charts that are not being audited properly. It'll also add someone in our contract and, our contract oversight. Sorry, I'm losing the, the other piece of the work. The fiscal and contract oversight, helping us manage the large volume of grant-related work that we've taken on and contracts associated with that. And I think our commissioners know how backed up we can get in the contracts department. And then last, it adds a case manager so that we can bring our really successful Supported Employment Program to our two rural clinics. Right now, that, that offering is not available in Lapine or Redmond and we would like to make it available there. Those two latter asks do not require county general fund. We are able to cover that for several years at a minimum through prospective payment revenue. And with that, I will turn it over to Cheryl.
So, what you have here is a look to 2026 for behavioral health only. Includes the admin that's proportional to support behavioral health. But this is based on what we know today. So earlier I showed all of health services and all of the funds. This is behavioral health's view. As you can see, we are projecting unfunds, unfunded gap of 6.2, 6.3 million dollars going out to 2026. So if CCBHC PPS were to continue, if the special requests for behavioral health are all approved and the CCBHC expansion positions are converted to regular, this is what that view looks like. Going out to 2026, that unfunded gap is $3.2 million. This assumes that every year, every penny that's budgeted is spent, which we historically have known is not the case. So we do not anticipate a gap should all of these come to fruition. And that is because many of the positions that we're talking about today are revenue generating. So I just wanted to highlight that. And in summary, priorities one, six, and eight of your handout for behavioral health cover 12.6 positions at a total cost of $1.2 million in fiscal year '22 and asking for $241,970 in county funds.
How does that relate? I'm having a problem here. Probably just me with this sheet and then these. The numbers don't seem to stack up. I have $484,594. Where's that show up over here?
So in the special request, the, the text document that I believe you have, we're required to add the revenue that, that might be generated by these positions. So it takes the total cost, less the revenue, you get a new total cost, and then the county general fund. So what we're showing here is total cost without, including the revenue.
On the, the big budget?
In the big budget, yep.
I'm reverencing page 306.
Okay, so that's going to be priority number, so this is one of the.
It's priority one, but I don't know how the priority system really works anymore.
So showing the, you do the same at 675 up there.
They have, we have position numbers one, six, and eight.
Priority number one, six, and eight, right.
Then over here in priority one, the net cost is 484 and here, net cost.
So Mike, look up a couple of lines from the 484. Look up two lines. See the 675?
675?
See it?
Okay.
Got it?
But I think it, it actually highlights a key factor for these positions. Most of the behavioral health positions that are requested in the special requests and for the continuation of CCBHC generate PPS revenue. And in fact, once they are no longer Expansion Grant funded and convert to regular positions, those positions also generate PPS revenue. So those 19 positions, 10 of them are clinical and they are not able to generate PPS while they're grant-funded, but once they convert, they do generate additional revenue. So that's a, that's part of what helps cover the cost of these positions.
Okay, so for example, on page 306, and I'm guessing you have that.
We don't have your pages, so it's hard for us to know what you're referring to.
You're looking at one of the special requests.
I'm looking at the budget. And the deal is the budget isn't going with the handouts. And so I'm trying to figure out how many of these are regular there or they're not there or they're new positions?
Which special request are you looking at?
Page 306.
Well, and this may be that question of, is this in the proposed budget?
It's not in the proposed budget.
So these are new items.
Well, some of it is the continued.
Yeah, but I mean.
Pick them up.
Mike was asking about the number of.
Let me go back.
No, I don't have one. I just.
Janice, what I don't understand is.
Stay in from this budget.
If you're saying that we have 19 positions currently, but we need to add the other 10, is that not what one of these little bullet points said? Yet we're adding 12, 12.6 per these three requests.
One of the positions is an existing position. It's the language access coordinator. So one of the positions in the special request is a current 19, current one of the 19 limited duration positions. It's the language access coordinator that was funded through the CCBHC Expansion Grant. And it's part of the improved access special request number six.
Got it? So that's one.
Is that good or is this?
Yes.
I have a bar chart question, so it might be a Cheryl question, but.
Yep.
But I'll put it out to you guys. So on, I, I love these, these multi-year projections too, showing that we're solidly funded for, you know, several years to come. But the, the green, the green portion of the bar showing beginning working capital, I mean, by the time you get out to 2026, the, the green portion has shrunk. So is that, does that reflect, A, that we're actually drawing down those reserves without there being replacement? I mean, basically you've accumulated these reserves, if I was tracking correctly, like in part by, you know, the prospective payments coming in after we budgeted for the year and then, you know, you, you carry that into the next year. So in the future, like by 2026, is it possible that there'll be other funds replacing those beginning working, working capital dollars?
Yes. The answer is yes and no. So yes, it does make it look like it shrinks, which it does every time we project out because we can't know four years down the road what that beginning working capital will look like. What it's looked like every year is more than we anticipated. That has been in part because of PPS revenue. It has been in part because of savings that occur every year. It's been in part because frankly, I think we've been very successful at pursuing grant funds and being creative about how we find revenue to cover costs. So every year, it gets a little further out that that green bar is small. And that's just a phenomenon that we work within always as we're projecting out into the future.
I mean, essentially we're using the beginning working capital one year and then at, by the end of the fiscal year, we have, we carry, we, we were coming out with some dollars and that.
Correct.
A new, a new green bar essentially.
That's correct.
Actually, I'll, I'll add something too, which is particularly to Janice's credit, that behavioral health has also been very aggressive, particularly in person Janice, in pursuing revenues in the contract structure as well. So we've been, in general, we're very good at seeking grant funds. And then in particular, been very successful in persuading Pacific Source and the other parties involved to have contracts which provide a favorable.
I had a problem with her.
I, I, I'm distinctly remembering one contract that you brought back to us where you said, those guys made, they, they made a mistake and we caught it and we, we held them to it and now we get a couple hundred thousand dollars.
That's a rare event, but it happened.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Janice, can you explain more about the general fund contribution on item number one? So, in other words, a portion of those crisis response FTEs, the 6.6, are funded and a portion are not. Is that because we need more than that was funded? Or is it because they're all partially funded by a grant? Can you just explain more?
Yeah. Yes, I can. The two positions that are not funded through PPS, we added very much at the request of our law enforcement partners. So one is a, and our county council frankly. Dave Doyle has noted a concern about the workload that's associated with the county's increased responsibility for civil commitment and aid and assist. And so this particular person would be a behavioral health specialist who licensed, who would be conducting the monitoring portion of our civil commitment workload. So right now, we have civil commitment, a civil commitment investigator, but their workload has increased dramatically and they're not available to do both investigations, court hearings, and monitor. And so this was a specific position we added to address that workload. The second position is a nighttime case management position that Holly added to the budget because of the increasing, what we're seeing with our crisis stabilization clients is that they're coming to us with housing needs, food needs, medical needs, transportation needs. We're serving a large number of individuals that are not housed and have complex needs and need case management supports even after hours. So that's that particular position.
And those are, there's not state funds available to support those?
There's not state funds available to support those positions.
So my question is sort of the same. And I'm looking at the blue and green lines on the chart trying to understand. So when you say these are general fund, some are general fund positions. So, when you say these are general fund, some are general fund positions, but then they'll be bringing in revenue, does that, is it an ongoing commitment from general fund, and then you get the revenue into the department? It helps the green line, but the general fund continues to support that? Or how does that offset, or it does it?
It, so, both of those positions are positions that can bill for direct services, so they can bill Medicaid. Our case management, and I'm sorry, this is a complicated explanation, so I'm going to try to be as clear as I can be. The case manager position is going to be providing services to many of our clients pre-treatment. Currently, the Medicaid system doesn't allow us to bill for services until a client has a full assessment. It's frankly not a functional approach to this work, and we're actually advocating at the state and national level to try to change that. But the reality is that those people don't become eligible for PPS revenue because they're not open. You know, we're seeing them in crisis, straight off the street, providing services, and so it's difficult to bill for those services. The civil commitment monitor, once those individuals are open to us as clients, we can bill Medicaid if they are in fact Medicaid recipients, and that generates a PPS payment for that person. So, it's a both and. Those positions are likely not to generate as much as, for example, an outpatient clinician who's seeing six or seven clients a day, back to back, mostly in the Medicaid sort of realm, and generating a significant amount of revenue. These are positions that tend to work in arenas where we have less opportunity to generate revenue. However, that is calculated into the PPS rate, because remember, that rate is basically saying, what's your cost to do the work? What does Medicaid pay you? And we pay you the difference. So, it's a complicated relationship, if that answers your question.
So, going forward...
Yeah.
Who pays for those positions? Is it general fund, or does it get offset by return to the department, and then you don't have to subsidize it?
Yeah, I think that remains to be seen. Right now, what we're asking for is county general fund. If we generate more PPS revenue than we anticipated, then we clearly can offset it with PPS revenue. If we don't, we're in a different scenario, and we have to look at other options. It is also possible that in this next legislative session, we will get some additional revenues through the state's effort to fund some things in the crisis array, and we may be able to do some offsets that way as well. So, I really think there's some hope on the horizon that there may be offsets in coming years. But this year, it's an immediate need, and it's a need that we apply a request for county general fund to.
Just one last question. What happens if the committee decides not to fund it with the general fund? What are the downsides?
Well, the downsides are always services to people. So, we are not, we are not doing, we're doing civil commitment monitoring now, but not at the level that we should be. So, there's some risk to the county frankly, to our agency and to clients more importantly. Well, I don't want to minimize risk to the county. I'm just saying, what we think about are people out there being served. And then, in terms of case management, it just means that you have higher paid staff doing case management duties who really need to be doing clinical interventions, and that's not a very efficient way to apply resources. It's not, in my view, a smart way to apply resources, and the best thing you can do is have a case manager do case management and have a clinician do clinical work with ill people. So, what will happen is we'll cobble it together and do what we do, which is get through it to the best of our ability. Thanks for your time and your very smart questions. Appreciate it.
I'm in good shape. Yeah, I was, I just get confused because I'm old.
We need some special attention from Cheryl.
Do you need space for your two folks up front?
I don't know, I don't think yet.
Okay. It's okay.
Y'all need a break? I mean, the easy service area is coming up now, so.
Are you done with your presentation then?
No.
Just public health. Sorry.
Just public health.
Yeah, just public health remaining. So, we need a minute break, or we're good? We're good? I see our colleagues from Ben Lepine Schools are here. Welcome. Thank you. Yeah. So, I'm just going to plow ahead through a few special requests, and then we're going to have ample time for spirited discussion, exciting discussion around your success program. Really, in some ways, I do... No, what happened?
Work off of this, and then we'll go to the...
It's probably number five. It's on the routine of this one handout, Mike. We're talking about this youth success partnership. That's what we're going to do?
I'm sorry, we were wondering if we should have masks.
Why the hell do you even have this?
Do you want to go through your presentation?
Okay.
Yeah, I'll go through, and then we'll do youth success last.
Sounds great. Yeah.
They're asking if they should have their mask on.
Yeah, so, we're not requiring masks if you're vaccinated.
But we don't need our card?
I'm not asking you for your card.
Please.
Great. Just waiting for Mike in case. Yeah, okay, great. So, good afternoon. Should you approve our requests? We would be investing in building healthier communities, ensuring healthy people and families, promoting healthy youth. And of course, just like they say on the airlines, put the mask on first before you help others, we would be investing in a healthier department as well. So, this is to the best of my abilities how I contextualize the investments in public health for coming year and years to come. And they're very much connected to the mission of the department, which, as you know very well, is around promoting and protecting health and safety of our communities. Now, I do want to provide two caveats. One is that, as happened with other service areas, we received a long, much longer list of requests at the director level. We went through them, and we decided that these special requests coming before you are the best investments in terms of the biggest bang for your buck or for our buck, because this involves my taxes too. So, that's, so I want to mention that we have gone through a prioritization probably two or three times already before coming to your good selves. And then, the other is that we have ensured that we have had community inputs and participation in some of the special requests that are before you. We've gone through a regional health assessment in 2018, 2019, and we've had parallel discussions throughout this budget process with the constituents and committee members to ensure that we've had adequate, their voices incorporated in these requests. Our first policy decision is around our environmental health program and includes three requests for your consideration. What the projections from the Oregon Employment Department show is that central Oregon restaurant and food service industry is expected to grow by more than 9% by 2029. And frankly, a lot of us believe that's an underestimate. And even though our environmental health team is an integral part of the county's business-friendly strategy and instrumental to the success of the tourism industry, as indicated by the graph to the left, our environmental health team has been functioning from a position of deficit for years. Our annual food service inspection ratio is around 550 per staff, whereas the FDA standard is around 280 to 320 per FTE. So, it's almost double. What this means is less quality and thorough inspections in support for our business community and potentially increasing our risk for foodborne illness outbreaks, which range from a few thousand to a few million dollars. This is happening during a time when the complexity of the demands from our businesses is increasing, and we are getting many requests and demands around campsites, long-term care facilities, child, childcare centers, tobacco retails, air quality, smoke, wildfire, HVACs, and on and on and on. So, our first request is to recruit for a new regular environmental health specialist two. This would allow us to build in-house expertise around air quality, smoke, and wildfire and HVACs, and address environmental health hazards and risks to our communities, schools, child cares, long-term care facilities, and residents, and in fact, nearly 5 million annual visitors. This position will also be cross-trained to help reduce inspection ratios for food service operations, which is our largest licensing program. So, that's the first request. Our second request is to convert an existing environmental health specialist two, limited duration, to regular. This will allow us to recruit and attract top-notch candidates for a critical position, which would help get food service inspection ratio per FTE lowered from 500 plus per year. And frankly, this is just a Band-Aid. The reduction is going to be by only 50 or 60 inspections. Our final ask is for base service level funding, which will vary depending on your consideration of accepting our proposal of instituting an annual inflation adjustment, which will bring predictability to our businesses, much like our COLAs do for our salaries. Without the CPI or Consumer Price Index adjustment, we would need an additional $78,000 increase to close the service level gap. With CPI increase of 1.4% this year, which is the inflation rate, we would require around So, our fiscal year '22 requested county funds is 100 and nearly $175,000 this year. Any comments, questions? We're all good?
That includes an increase in the 1.4% you said?
Okay. So, now moving into investing in healthy people and families. Our next policy decision is related to perinatal care coordination, which refers to continuum of care from conceiving a child to post-delivery. Now, evidence tells us that pregnant women who access and receive relevant services prior to and right after delivery have better pregnancy and health outcomes than otherwise. For example, 17% of pregnant women less likely to develop high blood pressure if enrolled in WIC, Women, Infants, and Children Program, or deliver 18% fewer preterm births if enrolled in nurse family support services. In Deschutes County, our PCC or Perinatal Care Coordination Program has been successful in helping 1,000 pregnant women every year to navigate the complex systems and agencies that frankly don't speak well with each other, and share information with pregnant women to raise their awareness and direct them to essential services, such as primary and dental care, insurance coverage, WIC services, parenting classes, and I could have definitely benefited from that, or mental health care. Our PCC program helps support pregnant women's healthy choices, much like the Small Business Development Center at COCC does by connecting small business owners to community resources and helping them make smart business decisions and prosper. Most importantly, our PCC program data show that our clients significantly outperform those who are not enrolled in our program. Why? Because pregnancy is a vulnerable time in our lives, and our programs reduce barriers and support good decisions that pay high dividends for generations to come. However, we are only reaching 56% of the target population of 1,800 women, pregnant women, due to our human resource capacity. Our ask for this year is for an additional one FTE health educator position to help increase contact for an additional 500 pregnant women who would increase, which would increase our PCC coverage to 83% of the pregnant women throughout the county. Frankly, this proposal also makes business sense because we have started billing for our services, and we anticipate generating revenues which will pay for part of this position. Our fiscal year '22 requested county...
Do I have a question for Cheryl? Because on our, this handout, it said the total cost is $109,021, but yet, on our spreadsheet, it shows it as the $89,000, and I'm just wondering, why is the difference?
We, in, we anticipate that this position is revenue generating with $19,500, I believe, along those lines in year one, with ramp up once we know exactly how much will be billed. So, the county funds being requested are $89,000.
Right, that's in the county fund column, but why wouldn't you put total cost there and then, you know, where it's, you're saying that you're going to have some... Aren't some of these, like you have some that show total cost, and then you have the requested funds because of revenue? It seems like it's inconsistent.
It's inconsistent?
Yes.
Okay. I would have to look back at that, but that's certainly my error.
Well, I mean, I'm looking at this one, and I'm going, the request number one that I think Mike was having a hard time with, it says it's a cost of $484,000, but yet there's $193,511 that doesn't show up anywhere. You know, it's just how to follow the numbers.
Yep.
I'm not nuts.
It's not just you, Mike.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, who's billed for these PCC services? Who would...
OHP clients or Oregon Health Plan.
So, OHP would be billed for a client?
Yep.
Well, this program would be actually covering all pregnant women, and if they have private insurance, we would also be billing private insurance. If they have OHP, it would be OHP, so it's all insurance.
Does this program have anything to do with Healthy Beginnings as well, or is that, are they completely separate? They do health screenings and things like that?
Healthy Beginnings, so...
Yeah, that's a different program. That's a program that's here in Deschutes County that, it kind of does the same thing, I believe.
Separate nonprofit effort.
Yeah.
Pre-needled.
Yeah.
Evidently not.
I, yeah, I'm afraid I'm not familiar with this program with a nonprofit. What I know for us, it certainly fills a gap because we have sort of services that cover the pregnancy period, we have services that cover the post-pregnancy or post-delivery, and then we, certainly this group is navigating sort of these complex periods and agencies and systems to try to connect them to the relevant services and support.
Bill, I believe the Healthy Beginnings addresses the little kiddos when they're, when they're at a certain age.
Probably about two.
Not so much, not so much the prenatal services.
Okay.
The kiddos, yeah.
So, how do you connect with these people in this stage of life? And not everybody, I assume, will be interested?
Yeah.
And so, I know your goal is to reach everybody, but what's your realistic goal?
Yeah, so, first of all, I would say that, so that's a fair question. I would say that we have yet to come across anyone that hasn't benefited from getting connected to a dozen page of resources out there. Having said that, what we're doing is asking for a position that would increase coverage from 1,000 women out of 1,800, 1,000 pregnant women, to 1,500. So, we're also accounting for a percentage, maybe around 17 to 20% of women that might choose otherwise, and that's certainly their right. So, this additional position, Bruce, would increase coverage from 56% to 83%.
Bruce may have also been just, were you asking, like, how do they identify the, who's pregnant in the first place?
So, we have, what we do is actually, we have folks, and this was a bit complicated during the pandemic, but we have folks who are waiting at East Cascade and St. Charles, where the primary centers are, and they connect with providers at these centers, and they refer clients to us, and then from there, we're able to refer them out to other services that exist. So, we have a very hands-on presence to make sure that we are available to our clients. Yeah. So, if you allow me, then, I go to the second part of investments in healthy people and families. The next policy decision is an addition of part-time admin support tech for our reproductive health clinics. Despite the pandemic, as I mentioned, in April, our services were in high demand, and in fact, we could have surpassed 2019 numbers. fact, we could have surpassed 2019 numbers if we hadn't shifted out a clinician from reproductive health clinics to the vaccination rollout. Currently, in our reproductive health clinics, which is around the corner, by the way, and I made a visit there, which was fantastic, and we have another one in Redmond, we only have a medical assistant who speaks Spanish. And given that 25 to 30% of our clients are Spanish-speaking, we often have to pull our Spanish-speaking MA or medical assistant from doing her regular work to provide translation services. Or we have to pull our MA to actually replace our front desk staff for extended periods because our staff are unavailable, maybe they're on leave or they're on sick, sick leave, for example. So this means that we have to reschedule patients and reduce our services because the MA is no longer able to help with the turnover of the rooms, cleaning and preparing the rooms for the next patient or processing lab specimens. And instead, our very high-paid OB-GYN or nurse practitioners would have to do that work, which results in seeing less patients, less revenues, and frankly, dissatisfied committee members because we have to reschedule some of those clients. We estimate losing around $1,000 a day when our MA gets pulled out to cover front desk duties or translation services for the whole day. Therefore, we are asking for a part-time FTE admin support tech to help support our ask, our lack of human resource capacity in processing clients in our reproductive health clinics. We believe it makes both customer service sense and fiscally-minded staffing sense as we estimate that the cost savings will pay for this position. To make your decision perhaps somewhat easier, our fiscal year 22 requested county funds is $0.
So where's the money coming from?
The money in fiscal year 22 will come from Central Oregon Health Council funds.
Okay.
After that, we either will identify additional funds to cover the position or it would be a county fund request.
For both of these?
For the part-time position.
Well, there's an $88,162 with no funds requested, and there's a $40,942 with no funds requested.
I have-
The previous-
I think we're just talking about number-
Previous one, actually.
Talking about 10.
Okay.
But see, I've said, it's really, you're going to have to hire a whole person.
Yeah.
Who's going to take a job at half a person in today's economy when they're getting $300 a week in unemployment?
Yeah, should the, should the, should the committee move in that direction? We have actually developed a job description for a full-time employee because there's plenty of work to be done to, and justifies it.
Bilingual.
Right, they really need it.
Oh, I know.
And I met like your bilingual team on Friday. What is it, Tanner? And I'll-
So we, we are prepared for that conversation, should we go in that direction. So may I proceed?
Oh, yeah, I'm fine, thank you.
Thanks.
You're not asking for money, I'm good.
Yeah, exactly, right, making it easy. So I'm going to actually pre-pone, I think that's actually a word, pre-pone one of the requests. It's around healthy departments so that we can then go into healthy youth. So this one, this is the fourth policy decision, which is to convert a limited-duration admin assistant which reports to me to regular status. This position already exists, thanks to the commission, our commissioners for agreeing to this position last November. Now, the photo on the left is not me. In fact, he's familiar to all of you, I'm sure, that's Eric Moni. However, this is how I often feel without my admin assistant, which I believe is a core organizational capacity and allows us to keep up with our counties and departments' inevitable growth. This position since fall of 2020 has brought enormous efficiency to our work and our division and contributes greatly to our institutional knowledge and memory. I'm asking for your kind consideration that we convert it to a regular position so that we can ensure predictability and stability in this core position and attract and keep top-notch candidates. Again, to make your decision somewhat easier, our fiscal year 22 requested county funds is $0. The combination of a, yes?
On our handout, it's actually number nine and not number eight. I mean, I'm trying to-
Sure, sure. I think there might be some-
I'm not sure about the book.
Yeah.
Book might be right.
Oh, Mary.
Thanks, Commissioner. So if no questions, then I'll go to the last two requests. Okay. Now, the, this is now moving into investments in promoting healthy youth. The fifth policy decision is regarding an existing substance abuse prevention program in Lepine and Sisters communities. This prevention program focuses on youth marijuana, alcohol, and tobacco and vaping use, and it is set up to help reach our youth before it's too late, as youth are significantly more likely to become substance-dependent in adulthood if they begin in adolescence. This policy decision includes two requests for your consideration. The first does not, and I hope this helps, does not involve funding, but is to request that the current limited-duration position be converted to regular. We're not asking for funding for the position as behavioral health has provided the funding and is yet another example of our department's culture and vision of integration and collaborative spirit. Thank you, Janice. The second ask is for around $33,000 funding to help us conduct robust evaluation efforts and maintain additional parent education. Preliminary data show that this program is making a meaningful difference in our schools and our communities. As indicated on the left chart, for several years prior to this program being established, we were seeing high and increasing number of students violating school drug and tobacco use policy in K through 12. Instead of suspending our youth from school and not necessarily educating them on the harms of substance use, our upshift program helps the schools set up alternatives to out-of-school suspension so that our youth learn about the dangers of substance use and are equipped with knowledge and confidence to make better choices in life. As our data indicate, for each youth enrolled in this program, they save around 18 hours of classroom time. Of the 39 students enrolled in our program in one of the schools, only three had repeat violations. That's remarkable. This program is not going away, and we're not, and we are benefiting from behavioral health predictable investments, so we are proposing to convert this limited-duration position to regular, which would allow us to keep great talent in key positions. And I'd say this with somewhat of a heavy heart because today, actually, and a couple hours ago, a letter went out to the incumbent, to the person in this position, giving them heads up about their limited-duration position. It also ensures long-term sustainable solutions in Lepine and Sisters communities. Our fiscal year 22 requested county funds is only around $33,000, as $125,000 was transferred from behavioral health. And it includes evaluation, which I know, Mike, you certainly appreciate.
And this is Lindy Perry, who had been working at Sisters, that I know was really significantly, had built a great rapport with that community, had a room actually in the high school, so.
Yeah.
I think that we're really happy to have her.
Absolutely.
This chart with the blue line at 43 and the red at 26, is that for the, all the schools in Deschutes County or any one in particular?
These are in Sisters and Lepine schools and to avoid identifying-
It doesn't, it includes Ben Lepine?
It includes Lepine.
Oh.
And the next one deals with Ben Lepine School District. This, this, this position, that one, the number, for number two, that's just supporting substance abuse prevention work in Sisters and Lepine.
Are, are these numbers of incidents associated with availability of cannabis and vaping?
So if you're asking about if there is correlation in outlets and what's happening here, I don't have studies that I can refer to, local studies that I could refer to, to give you an intelligent answer.
Those-
Do you have anything?
Dramatic numbers over a short period of time.
I mean, there's, there's general awareness that legalization can result in increased use by young adults, but there's also some evidence that, that the, the legal structures that are put in place when legalization occurs actually reduces use by young adults. So we really have conflicting information at this point, and I don't think we have a long enough trajectory to know for certain what's true.
Yeah. And I did get a text from Jessica Jacks. As you know, she, she's a supervisor in our prevention program, and the answer is yes, it is related to cannabis. So, but also, Janice said.
Thank you.
Good question.
I know these are old stats, and this position has not been going that long.
Right.
And so, in three years from now, the clowns that are sitting here looking at the budget, if that's not going down, we should probably figure out something's wrong.
Well, so first of all, that's why we want to do an evaluation.
Yep.
Yeah, so first of all, that's why we want to do an evaluation. Second of all, if we don't intervene, the numbers are likely to increase. With intervention, we could either slow down the increase, flatten it, or decrease it. So we don't know. But there are multiple, I mean, it's not just also one intervention that would make a difference, right? There are multiple factors in our communities that also impact this.
I'd like to see some goals and some measurements.
Absolutely, and that's why we're proposing an evaluation. Yeah. Yeah, I would like to see, exactly, I want, I would want to see, if the numbers don't go down, I would want to see why not. So doing an evaluation to find out what's going on is important. Do we need to change our strategy or tactics? Are there other factors going on? Yeah. So if I may now, because I want to give ample time to my colleagues in the back, our last, should we-
I want to make space for one of your folks to come up.
Who would like to?
Uh-huh. Did you let them know?
Is that Julianne?
Yes.
You want to come up?
I have, Melissa or Sean.
Here we go.
Go ahead and do a little presentation and we will, we will answer questions.
Sure, so, so I'll go ahead and, I'll go ahead and introduce the request.
Against the wall.
Just take my spot.
Melissa, you can come up here.
Right.
So. Oh, you got-
Me.
Yeah.
Happy, he says.
So I'm just going to give, introduce the special request and then give the-
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. So our last policy decision is a proposed new initiative called Youth Success Partnership Program, which establishes a health promotion and prevention program in Ben Lepine schools to serve more than 18,500 students per year. Our BLS youth is around 10% of our county's population, but forecasted to increase by 26% by 2040. As I mentioned in the previous policy decision, the Youth Success Partnership Initiative recognizes the fact that we are reaching our youth when it's too late. In fact, drugs, tobacco, vaping, alcohol, teen pregnancy, unsafe sex, STDs are reaching them before we do. As indicated on the bottom-left box, 30% of 11th graders report using e-cigarettes, 19% report binge drinking, 21% report marijuana use. Around 31% of chlamydia cases since 2011 are among 19 years and younger. We had 25 teen pregnancies last year. Immunization rates among youth have also dropped. Public health has the skills and expertise to change this trajectory. However, we don't have the capacity or current system in place to make it happen. Ben Lepine Schools shares our concern and is willing to double our proposed investment and help place public health specialists inside the school walls to increase youth and parental knowledge and engagement in curbing high-risk behaviors. Just as important, evaluation will be part of the program design from day one. There is joint commitment to clearly demonstrate meaningful change through statistically valid evaluation methods. This initiative will bring two agencies with two different missions together to focus on the most important assets in our communities, which is our youth. The estimated cost for fiscal year 22, which covers 2.6 FTE for the county, would be $161,000 and progressively increasing to $385,000 by year three. As mentioned, Ben Lepine Schools will double this investment. And with that, if there are no burning questions, I'll give the floor to Melissa. Any clarifying questions or, okay, please?
All right, thank you so much for having us today. We are very eager to propose and support the Youth Success Partnership opportunity that we have developed over the past few years in collaboration with Deschutes County Health Services. We believe that this small investment will have profound impacts for our community's students, their families, and for our school staff. Our proposal will not only help to improve health outcomes, but will also have positive impacts on student academic and civic success. We are committed to these services. Placing public health specialists to work within schools ensures that this expertise is used and coordinated by the experts in this field and not left up to our educators and administrators to understand a field of study that they are not trained in. Our model collaboration with our local law enforcement to have school resource officers working in our school buildings is a prime example of how Ben Lepine Schools has partnered with other agencies to build success, as well as our collaboration with our fan advocates, our family advocacy network. So, so there was two pieces, and I'm like, okay, that, that's the piece I thought Julianne was doing. But I'll keep, I'm sorry. So thank you for asking us to join us here today and to discuss an updated, because we've, we've seen this before, but an updated and exciting opportunity to implement and scale a public health education model that will no doubt become a model for the nation. It's my hope that you will leave today as excited as we are about this opportunity to work together and the increased benefits our relationships will have on our community today and for generations to come. As we in education sit in the driver's seat for academic student success, we need to lean on you to drive public health student success. This initiative will place your public health specialists within our school walls, and our principals are clamoring to be the first to welcome this new team into our schools. Right now, we have schools excited to welcome your professionals in both Bend and in Lepine Sun River. With your team embedded in our schools, the piecemeal approach goes away. Walls go down and camaraderie and trust are gained. Instead of coming in a few times a year as a resource, the Youth Success Partnership ensures that public health is part of the everyday fabric inside the walls of our schools. Instead of two teams, we become one. Over the past decade, schools have received increasing attention as important venues for addressing health-related initiatives of so many different kinds: obesity, being more physically active, nutrition, safety and injury prevention, substance abuse, suicide prevention. Schools are an ideal place to address many public health concerns as children spend nearly half their waking hours with us in their most developmental and critical years, for those 13 years of kindergarten through 12th grade. Well, we as a school district want the very best for our students. We want them to be able to develop healthy lifestyle choices. It's not what schools are actually accountable for. Education's primary change is ensuring that all of our students acquire the knowledge, the skills, and the mindsets necessary to graduate and to go on to productive careers. Similarly, public health, I'm sure you all want our kids to graduate and to become productive citizens, but it's not your mandate to take care of that, it's, it's ours. And we want to make sure that working together, we can actually do both. Expecting schools to take on all of the expertise that you have in this room, as well as what we already are mandated, isn't realistic without partnership, but we believe that we can have that- But we believe that we can have that partnership and that we can do it. We believe we can do this together, but we need your help to do it. It takes a combined effort and a community effort to make it happen, and the expertise of your public and behavioral health staff is going to be pivotal to this success. We want to be able to find ways to do this better, and this is how we can. Just as we have leaned on public health to safely address COVID-19, we also need to lean on you to address issues such as vaping, all of the slides that we just saw, the vaping, the marijuana, the suicide, the bullying, the social media safety. Um, we're committed to these services and this partnership with you. And I believe that this small investment by each of our agencies together will not only stretch our constituents' investments, but will have profound effects, um, for future generations. I firmly believe that our communities deserve the best, and I believe that we must strive to improve what we are doing now, which is already helping them, but work to improve that even further and improve that benefit. This partnership allows both Ben Lepine Schools and Deschutes County Health Services to address our shortcomings and have positive impacts on student health, their academics, their civic success, and their future. I believe that we owe it to our students and their futures to kick this off now. Um, and I encourage you to, to support this project. Thank you for continuing, um, to partner with us, and thank you for your visionary thinking on this new model and something I believe will pay dividends for our community and our children for years to come.
Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. Thank you, Julianne.
You never want the money guy to start whispering to you. Thank you, Nahad. And thank you all for letting us be here and today. I saw you guys last year virtually, so it's lovely to be here. Thank you. And, um, Mike, so that's 50%. We're in for 50%, okay?
Well, I don't think it's a small investment, $800,000 over three years.
No, you're right, because what that investment is going to do is have huge, huge impactful gains in this community around prevention via pipeline to the work that Janice is doing. Hopefully, she'll see fewer people on her end if we get this work done here.
My, my only ask, and I, we talked earlier, is have some specific performance measures.
Yep.
So whoever's here in three years can say, here's what they laid out, and here's where we're at. We knocked this, uh, e-cigarettes down to 18%. We did this, we did that. Or we have a problem here and we need to put something else. But I just hate to see the county put in 800 grand over three years and then sit there and just say, well, we're just expected to continue going. We don't know if we did anything.
We agree with you 100%. That data, having a data-driven approach to this.
Yes.
Where we upfront identify, you know, take time to look at all the information we have through the surveys that we've already been doing, commit to continuing to do those.
Have the baseline.
Yep. Pick some data points, just like you guys do on your teams, the county commissioners have data points, but we want to pick those data points upfront. We want to meet and exceed the goals there and then continually reevaluate, how are we doing? Why aren't we meeting the goals? Pivot, pivot, pivot. And as, uh, this partnership together will allow us to do that.
Well, I'm in your dugout.
You are?
Yeah.
All right. Are you going to, are you going to be like my pin shitter?
I don't know. Maybe I'll just be the umpire. No, that's, that's where I'm from.
Yeah, it's, you know, it's really a great opportunity, and I think it's been beneficial to have another year to take a look at it. And then we've also had some new surveys that we've adopted at Ben Lepine Schools, the Team Up Survey. So being able to really drill down on that is going to be pretty incredible. It's, I think it's going to be great. It's going to take a lot of work together. And I think also looking at this as, instead of all these little silos, making sure that we're constantly checking each other and saying, hey, why is this person not able to get into this program to deliver information to these kids? Or years ago, we had a, a meeting where we sat around, and Jessica Jacks will remember this too, she was there. We were like, this vaping thing, what is this? And instead of sitting around with people who don't know prevention work, we were sitting around with educators, and we were talking about vaping as a problem with our health curriculum. That's not where we address it. And so to be able to address it with a team like this, and you guys know, if you've been at Jessica's office, you walk down the hall, you bump elbows with someone who can talk about alcohol prevention, best practices, um, safe dating, et cetera, et cetera. So we're, we're looking forward to being able to bump elbows with you, rub elbows with whatever. George told me years ago, well, a year ago, we'd be bumping elbows. And I was like, no, we won't. But he was right with COVID. No more handshaking. So we, I think it's just going to be really great. And if you guys have questions, we have ideas already. Nahad has been phenomenal, phenomenal leader in this. Our deputy superintendent was just on Zoom, but she had to pop off for some interviews. And then Shay Michaels, and you guys know, and Lauren Norquist have been huge proponents of this. We've already talked about it with our incoming superintendent. So we're just excited to hit the ground, hire some good people, and really make a difference in the lives of these young people so that our community is a better place for all of us and there's less going into that financially. Now, Nahad, can I share that?
Uh, so who's hiring FTE here? It's a partnership.
You guys.
We do.
So these are going to be health staff, Deschutes County's health staff.
Yep. You guys are the experts, Kelly.
So then, well, then, uh, well, so where's the district funding this from? I mean, so this is, you know, we pay for the facilities and locally in our tax rate, and then the schools are funded by the state. So where, where are the, where are the dollars coming from? From, from the school district?
Strategic investment program. And Cheryl, we've, we've been having all kinds of fun conversations about dollars and cents. So Cheryl could probably talk about some of the overhead and things like that if you want to get into brass tax, of how we figured out the funding, uh, the amounts and how we got to half and half.
Oh, but yeah, tell me about strategic investment fund. That's what I've kind of.
That is the corporate activity tax. That is a, well, I'll call it a stable tax, but we're in Oregon. So it's a stable tax, and, um, those are dollars that we will continue to contribute to this. We committed to this last year in our strategic investment plan.
So these are new dollars to the district?
They are new dollars, yes.
And they're not just for educational purposes? They're for best investment?
Uh, they're for all different types of investments. So, um, it could be investments around materials. It could be investments around FTE. Sean, you want to jump in?
Yeah. So, um, about 18 months ago, we did that excellence and equity review. We did focus groups, dug in. So, and the state required that we do a review of how our going to spend this year in investment act funds, part of the SSA. And so we, our allocation at the time, this is pre-COVID, about $14 million. And so we've committed about half of that towards student wellness and, um, mental health, social, emotional, um, well-being. And the other parts were towards, um, class reduction and some other projects involved with that. So this slice of the SIA, the Student Investment Act, is going out of that wellness side. Um, and so for us, it's just, it's a way of really, um, integrating the work that we're already doing with Deschutes County. You know, it has been piecemeal time to time, and, um, we believe in capacity building with all of our staff. And so having, um, county experts in with us, embedded in the schools, with the kids, where the kids are, is going to help us really fill that capacity. And so when we think about a wellness program, not just social, emotional wellness, but also physical wellness, mental wellness, all those things, they're all part and integrated into what we're going to do. And those corporate activity taxes are, you know, they're, so on these corporate activities keep increasing, that, that, these are permanent positions. This is permanent funding, and that we're, we're, we don't see any ending signs. So this is a long, long-term, um, partnership. For example, how long have we been, um, doing our SRO program?
I think that's 1995. I might, I might remember.
Yeah.
Early 90s.
Yeah. We see it in that light, you know, this is going to be one of those foundational, foundational.
Well, you know, so everyone's aware, I think the school board is the same as the county board. You cannot commit a budget committee in a future year to an expense. And, uh, next year's budget committee can just go, or same with you. But it sounds like the enthusiasm's there from the school that this is, if it's successful and proves to be successful, we're in a long, long-term partnership.
Yeah. And that's also why we want to be really careful about how we grow the program. Want to start it small, make sure it's excellent, then grow it, and grow it, instead of just bringing everything on at once. And then Greg was whispering to me, you know, where's the ESD in this? And I was like, well, they're going to want to be involved. You know, this, I really do see this regional in no time, and I do truly believe we're the model of the nation. It's just absolutely what we should be doing, and it's the best way that we can really stretch those tax dollars that we have for the biggest thing for our communities. Good luck.
So we're talking about the experts in public health that can take, take this on. Do those people exist? Is there a model or curriculum, or where do you draw this information from?
Yeah, thanks. So as, as proposed in this special request, we would be recruiting 2.6 FTE. Why 2.6? Um, two, we would have two health educators that are .8, that's accounting for the summertime, and one supervisor for them.
So would this be considered a type of a pilot program in that if this goes on with Ben Lepine School District, we have a whole lot of other county that's, you know, I mean, you'll, we'll have Redmond, we'll have Sisters and other folks here right away. So could, presuming that it is as, as successful as, as it probably will be, uh, is this an investment need to be considered twice this size?
Uh, we'll worry about that in three years.
You mean, you mean to cover the other districts?
Right, yeah. But, you know, and would it be appropriate to just say, or would it be appropriate to say, no, we're not going to do that for other folks?
Well, I think you have to leave the door open if you're very successful in this and this partnership works. Whoever's in the board then, who's there, they would have to make that decision.
I mean, I'll also mention that I've had a couple of discussions with the superintendent for Redmond Schools, who's very interested to see how this works, um, and is very interested in, in working with the county to provide, uh, you know, both behavioral health services and prevention services in Redmond Schools. He has.
That's great. We just need to be realistic. Like Mike's saying, this isn't a small investment, and it's actually a lot bigger than this small investment.
If it works, we're going to be not looking at 300 or $800,000 over three years. You're going to be looking at maybe a couple million with the other districts involved.
Don't forget, though, that if it works really well, it makes us competitive for grant funds. And these kinds of models become available. So I, I just, I think that's why pilots are worth it. And, um, if we do a great job and we demonstrate some success, it's not necessarily this group that we come to. The funding may be other entities as well, and it may be that some state agencies come along that help on these kinds of efforts. So.
Yeah.
I'm probably thinking with my don't think too far behavioral hat, behavioral health hat, but it's worked for us.
So, um, if I might add, uh, the other thing to bear in mind is, well, two things. One is that Ben Lepine is bringing, bringing a commitment to the table. The other is that as far as costs go, um, many of the things that Nahad talked about have inherent costs to deal with, whether it's sexually transmitted diseases, teen pregnancy, et cetera. So the idea is that you're spending money to try to avert some of these downstream, very deleterious effects on, on the student.
So George, in fact, for teen pregnancy, averting one teen pregnancy equates to cost savings around $16,000 in medical care. For substance use treatment, it's around $28,000.
We might make money on this puppy.
Pardon me? So it is true that we are talking about, if we can avert just one, right? If we can prevent one of these events, um, it, it really equates to hard dollars. So I don't personally think this is a small investment. It's also my taxes going to, towards this, but I do think it's a smart investment. And yes, I have a skin in the game. I have two kiddos who are, who have entered the Ben Lepine Schools, and certainly I, I want them to have access to, uh, both, uh, school experts, um, as well as the public health experts in their settings.
I might have missed it in your comments, but the issue of are public health people just trained to do this? And they, they just launch and they're ready to go? Or is there curriculum in place? Or where do, where do they draw the body of knowledge?
This is truly an innovative initiative. Um, there are several models out there that we're drawing from in order to put this together. So when, what Julianne said earlier in terms of this becoming a national model, I really wholeheartedly believe in that. If we do it well, not if, when we do it well, um, it does. I think it will attract grants and it will become a national model. We would be recruiting, so we would be writing the job descriptions, obviously per county protocol, and we would recruit for two health educators and supervisors in the first, one supervisor in the first year. They would have to receive some level of orientation. I wouldn't say training, because we would want them to come qualified, um, with the necessary, um, skill set around prevention. However, they would have to be oriented to our context and then get started with proper supervision and mentoring from both schools, districts, and us.
And then the other question that came up last year when we had this discussion was about how effective can it really be? I know the concept makes a lot of sense, but I don't know how many students we're talking about, but let's say it's 1,000 students, and we've got two people or three people, uh, involved to make a difference, you know? How effective can they be covering from Lepine to Bend?
We're there, we'll scale it up. Sorry, we need to come here. Um, that's part of the scaling it up. But I think what we're also talking about is that these people will operate as a bit of a train to trainer. So if you think about being inside of a school system, and we want to have a vertical, we want a high school that'll have a middle school that feeds to it, and then elementary, they're going to start training people on where to find the resources, where to get the right information. They're going to be the expert that you're going to go to when you have a question about an emerging issue, um, the bullying or vaping, whatever it might be. If you start seeing clusters of kids that are drinking a lot, they're going to be the expert. So I really think of them as someone who goes in and they become the subject matter expert on several things that inspires all of these people to learn about it and also project it in their day-to-day activities. So, you know, in the classroom, even around teaching and learning, there could be an opportunity where a teacher is inspired by, um, let's use pregnancy as a model. And they go and they say, I want to do a lesson, a mathematical lesson with my students, but I want you to come in and talk about pregnancy, and what's the cost to society? And we're going to build a math lesson on that. So I mean, you just have to really start thinking outside of the box of how do we utilize these people? And then how do we make them multiply?
You can cross-train the school resource officer. It saves some money.
And if I may add to what Julianne said, Bruce, it's not feasible for 2.6 FTE to support 6,000 students, let's say, in the first year. So really, what we need to do is build systems in our school districts, in our context of the schools, to ensure that parents, administrators, uh, community leaders, youth are all involved, whether it's around protocol, around curricula, around training, uh, data. So it's really around building systems, and these people would be the, perhaps, uh, catalyst for that.
And thank you for bringing up families, because that's a big piece that I know public health is often trying to get the families to the table. And so I think that being better in the schools is really going to improve that, and also making more opportunities to engage families at the school level.
Yeah. And that's what we've done in Ben, in Lepine and Sister communities with our substance abuse prevention programs too, is build systems, or help with, of course, others build systems.
I wanted to circle back to, to Bruce's question and also just say, you know, this is, this is a unique kind of prevention program that, you know, there's, there's, there's not a whole bunch of models nearby to, to just kind of, um, you know, copy. But, uh, within, within public health, there are some amazing prevention specialties. I mean, you know, Jessica Jacks, you know, like I, 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 I had the chance to interact with her, you know, five, six, seven years ago, you know, in the middle of the opioid crisis, you know, and I got to understand what the, what the county was doing to, you know, to intervene in this kind of systemic problem that our, our, our community was facing. So we have, we have tremendous prevention expertise within the county already. And it's just a matter of kind of taking that, you know, broad overarching expertise and applying it in a really specific way.
Yeah. And, and thank you for saying that and for acknowledging Jessica. She truly deserves, um, the acknowledgement. And, and I would say that partnering with us is not just getting 2.6 FTE in the first year. They're tapping into 300-plus, um, experts from behavioral health, from public health, from admin services. So it's the weight of the department behind these staff being placed in schools. So our educators in schools may not have all the answers. They're going to come back to the department and go to Kathy Christiansen's for. They're going to come back to the department and go to Kathy Christiansen's, for example, and talk about adolescent health, go to so-and-so and get access to resources on maybe behavioral health. So it's tapping into the expertise of the department and not just one program or a couple of staff.
I think you have to also look at the fact that Deschutes County, our youth is always at the top end of all these issues. They experiment more than a lot of other counties. You see it, and our stimulant use is way going, I mean, adult and youth stimulant use. So yes, it's, and why is that? Why, why are we at such a top end? And how many counselors do you guys have for elementary school? Do you know?
I can tell you, we have one half of one.
One half, right?
Yeah.
See, and I know that person. And I go like you have half a counselor.
But we have school psychs. Because there's balance. But it's not, but it's not a counselor for every school in Oregon.
Yeah, no, it's definitely our, it's really, you know, the capacity, again, to me, it comes back to the capacity issue, building capacity at all of our buildings and really having an integrated model of how we do this. Because, I mean, let's face it, I think in our community, schools are asked to carry a lot, do a lot for youth. Like, we are in a lot of ways, sort of ground zero. So the more we can do to get all the services working together with a common, you know, mission, even though Nahad started off two different missions for the same purpose, the more we can do to get those things together, the better it's going to be, you know, bring the services to where the kids are, bring it to service to where the kids are when they're in a learning state of mind, when they're in that, you know, when they're in a space of, that's what we do there, it's in that mindset of mind, so.
So we're talking about two-point-six people, eighteen thousand students.
That's, that's a first year for six thousand.
Five-point-eight.
Yeah, we, you know, we've.
Somebody, it sounds like you guys need to pull more people in, seriously.
Yeah, I think that with the, well, we have, as part of the strategic investment plan, if anybody wants to go for coffee, I'll show you all the opportunities or whatever. But all the opportunity areas we've had through that SIP funding, we've really loaded up on behavior, intervention, social emotional health. This is just that little, what do you call it, a little cog in the wheel, I guess.
This is, this is rounding out the wellness aspects of our investment.
Yeah, and it's not, it does have walls, I would say. I don't see this, we really batted around for three, four years. How many people does this take? And we really don't think it needs to be a really high number. We just need quality and inspirational people who are really knowledgeable, who can, you know, really grow this program and the schools. So that's why when we get to year three, I think it is, we're fully scaled out unless something dramatically changes and what you guys want and you want to add more. But that's what we think we need to really make a meaningful difference on these kids' lives.
And by no means is this meant to replace the role of parents and families, right? They have a key role. There are institutions in our communities that have a key role to play in their children's plight in life, yeah? So this is just helping fill some tangible gaps. Bruce, you had a question?
Just one more quick question and I should know the answer to this, but do we have in-school health clinics still or?
We do. We still have seven school-based health center locations, the same that we had originally. But they serve, they serve a, in terms of behavioral health, they serve a specialty niche population, which are kids who meet criteria with a mental health disorder. And this project really fills a critical gap that we've talked about, I mean, Sean and I have talked for years, about the kids in the middle who don't get their needs met. If you're sick enough to have a mental health disorder, you get behavioral health services. If you're a kiddo with a lot of risk factors, you often fall between the cracks. And I think that's the goal of these services, is to really reach those kids and support schools in taking good care of those kids, so.
But the one I'm referencing actually had nurses in school.
Yes.
Issues that, you know, the kid could be right there and get taken care of.
Just to be county nurses a hundred years ago.
Yeah.
We do have those, those are on Sean's team, the school nurses, they're twenty-one.
Okay.
That do direct care type work, Sean, you talked about it.
Direct care, yeah. I mean, they're, they're really, they do high one diabetes management, health plan, you know?
Everything.
They're making sure that the kids are safe at school when they're there, healthy.
In some cases, that's the only contact we have with them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And they're very vigilant. Every other day I get a call, come pick up your son. So we'd like, I'd like to have a conversation with you on that.
And beyond, you know, the, the school has its, its nurses and then because that's in, you know, not enough health capacity, the, the county and a number of other, you know, you know, Mosaic and other partners set up these school-based health centers, the seven school-based health centers that are, that are, you know, got one in Redman and one, you know, it's, it's not, you know, one, one school-based health center in Redman when you've got, you know, what, six or seven schools, it, you know, it's a, it's not, it's not enough. And then, and again, the, the kind of services, they have, they have, they have, you know, physical health, like all sorts of physical health clinical services there. And then they have the behavioral health specialists from the county and embedded in those school-based health centers who deal with people who have, you know, serious mental health challenges. But not the, not the kid that may be on the cusp of getting in trouble, but could be steered away.
I hope, any other questions? We, this is, we're so fortunate to have our colleagues from Ben Lepine Schools here, so I want to make sure we maximize or optimize our time with them. Any other clarifying questions, anything else?
Maybe just the names for the record for the recording here because I.
Right.
The three of.
Can you speak it into the mic?
Is that, I have Sharon's up there wondering what, who is talking?
He is.
So she's in Redman and we wrote it down for you all.
Okay, there it is.
Sean Ryan, our major.
Melissa Barstow, high chair of the school board.
Yep, thank you.
Never mind.
Great, so the coffee offer stands for Patty. We'll cover all of the.
Coffee again today?
Not today. We're just.
More coffee?
So if anybody does want to see the other investments that we're making that are part of this wheel, happy to anytime soon.
I'd love to.
I know you would. Yeah. All right, thank you guys for the, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's all good. We know you guys have heart and sense, so we appreciate it. I feel like I should give you a hug, you're just a little trooper.
There you go. Thank you very much, yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Take care, everyone.
Thank you.
Hope you need anything. Good hire with this one, by the way. Well, this room is full of good.
There you go.
Nahad, we need to talk still. Bye, guys.
Bye.
So many members and commissioners, are there other, other broad questions?
Looks like we're there. I was just going to ask about the, the fold-out sheet. Could you touch on that briefly?
Yes. So the, the fold-out sheet summarizes all of the special requests in priority order. It should align with how your special requests are placed in your binder. The, oh gosh. The total cost adjusted for the one misstep for, related that Commissioner Adair pointed out, the total cost is two-point-seven million dollars. We are asking for seven hundred thousand, nine hundred seventy-four in county funds. It impacts twenty-four-point-two FTE, but it adds eighteen-point-two new FTE. So that's how you can look at those numbers. And in addition to this is the policy decision around CCBHC PPS, which would add or extend eighteen existing limited, or existing positions. In total, I don't want you guys to get confused, there are nineteen CCBHC positions, but one is included in the special request, so that's why you see that difference in FTE there. Correct?
Cheryl, the, this chart, the long-term pro forma, so the, the special requests are or are not included in that on the cost side?
The only one that is, is number two.
I, I personally think it would be useful to redo this with them all in, to kind of show that the impact over time and maybe at a larger scale, a little bit, the graph, so you can see a little bit more detail. I think that would be, to show beyond just next year, the sustainability issue kind of played out more. Recognizing the conversation that, or the discussion that Janice had earlier, which I think is spot-on in terms of this recurring beginning fund balance issue, kind of just materializing every year, but not being able to predict that. Nevertheless, I think that would be useful to see that, the impact of the positions played out over three or four years.
And you're talking for.
I already ordered two.
Well, I'm suggesting that they, they all go in there, just show that.
For all of health services, correct?
Yeah.
Can I just be?
So all thirteen special requests.
Investments.
Yep.
Yep.
Could I also just, just say that for the, the environmental health investment, restaurants and many of the other businesses that our environmental health division work with are a major part of what brings people to Deschutes County as tourists. So I, I think it's, number one, really important for us to, and, you know, these are some of the businesses who've been hammered, who've been hit the hardest during the pandemic. So I think it's really important for us to, to support them coming out of the pandemic, to also make sure that our environmental health special, people have the, the resources they need to do that job. And I, it just seems to me that it would be like elegantly appropriate for us to draw on that stockpile of transient room tax dollars.
Twenty million dollars flowing down, how?
Yeah, I mean, you know, like.
Our army of doctors.
Rather than, rather than try to address that, you know, that, that county funds need out of the general fund, I think it just seems like transient room tax is a more appropriate place to, to, to fill the environmental health shortfall with, in my opinion.
I, I think I would support the, the one-point-four percent increase to just keep up with, you know, costs for those fees, you know, which is supporting a business, but the business is, you know, a function of economic activity, so.
I see.
It'd be a starting point, but that's a, that's a discussion, it'll come around.
You're cutting into my drinking.
We have a real quick question. Most of the CCBHC positions currently expire four-thirty, twenty-two. What happens if the CCBHC policy decision isn't approved by the law?
So they, those staff leave and the services they provide end. So if we don't extend those positions through, our request is through the end, through at least the period of time that we have CCBHC demonstration funding approved, which is September of 2023, then all of the work they're currently doing and the positions end April thirtieth of this coming year. Yep.
Okay, we're going to have a thorough discussion of this coming up, so we'll probably have some more questions for you. I don't think we've asked for anything additional except Tom's request, so if there's any other comments, make them now or I think we're going to thank you for your time.
Actually, I.
Yes, sir.
One supplementary question. So Tom, when is it that we should have that?
Before Friday? That's when the discussion will come back around. Or by COB Thursday, probably, hopefully.
All right, any other questions or comments?
What's CCBHC stand?
Certified Behaboral Health Clinics.
Woo-hoo. Commissioner Adair gets the gold star.
I'd ask.
You asked the wrong person.
What does PCC stand for?
What? Portland Community College. Perinatal Care Coordinators.
Right, thanks, thank you, folks.
Thank you for your time.
We're going to continue the Deschutes County Budget Meeting to Wednesday, June second, 2021.
Fabulous.
That's right, this isn't Monday today, is it?
I know, you got to remember that.
Well, good.
Never did, I thought.
Oh, sweet. How'd you do?